Well, thank you for coming to beautiful Pine Street. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised as Park Press, issued November 21st, 2014, ominous, but clerks in the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting of notices have been met. I hope you can hear us, and the mics aren't on, but I'm sure Mrs. Joel recognizes my coaching voice, so she can tell that my voice is good.
Thank you.
Oh, they're on.
Recognizes and cringes.
Just one note, that the advertisement was actually on Monday because of the canceled meeting. I did not adjust that.
Thank you for staying on the ball, Mr. Boyce. Okay, minutes approval? Uh, Mr. Boyce? We need a motion for the minutes approval.
Second.
There we go, Mr. Boyce. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Hold on, Fankhauser, minutes?
I have to, I was not here on the 15th, I was down in Maryland, so I had to rescind that.
Abstain.
You got it.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes, on January 15th, abstain on December 15th. January 15th, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, next communications which are on file in the Office of the Board Secretary. Next report, superintendent's report.
A few items that I want to get into. We have two presentations this evening. One is the annual testing report, and the other one will be a presentation on Park Testing and the Common Core and those changes that are being implemented over the past several years with the Common Core, but this year in particular with Park. But I'll get to that in a moment, just a few items to highlight. Last night, we had a fantastic evening at Freehold Township High School. We hosted what was called the admissions game, and it was an expert, Peter Van Buskirk, who really takes, it was designed for parents and students in 10th and 11th grade, and it was really an overview of the college admissions process. But what this gentleman does, and we had brought him in earlier in the year to work with our guidance counselors, is he goes through a hypothetical application process with four potential applicants and engages the audience members. And I think that parents and students really came out with a much firmer understanding of what that application process entails. But I have to tell you, so it was the first time we've done anything of this nature, and we were hoping for a decent-sized crowd. Flash forward to about 7:15 PM where Mrs. Higley and I were directing buses in the parking lot, because the traffic jam had become so intense, we had, there was probably close to 1,000 folks that ultimately showed up. And the individual gave the presentation, Mr. Van Buskirk, said that he had given this presentation, you know, over a course of years and in many districts that were, in some cases significantly larger than ours, and he said that last night's crowd was more than double any audience he had actually ever engaged. So, I think that's a testament to a couple things. I think that's a testament to the type of community we have, and our parents, and their savviness and awareness that this is something that would be beneficial. Certainly, our students' commitments to wanting to navigate that process. I actually had students reach out and thank us for the evening, which I thought was terrific. But I'd like to thank Mrs. Howell and Dr. Hazel for really being the driving force behind that evening. I think it was something that fit a real niche within, you know, what we try to do for students in terms of helping them get through that college application process, which is daunting, you know, and complicated and complex. And so, any way that we can simplify that as a school district, I think, is important for us to engage with. So, it was a terrific evening. We also had, on February 3rd, an International Baccalaureate Information Night at Freehold Township High School, and we had about 50 families come to that of rising 9th graders. It was obviously an informational evening about what to expect with IB, but, you know, that program, the implementation, the launch of that program, so to speak, has been, you know, now really almost three years in the making. And it's been a lot of work, and Dr. Moore, and Stephanie Meckman, and Liz Higley and her team, and Mary Huff at Freehold Township have really done a ton of behind-the-scenes work in order for us to be able to launch that program next year, you know, really. And it's something that I think, you know, we pride ourselves in the district over, you know, the varying opportunities that we provide our students, so we're looking forward to that. And we've had a terrific parent, we've had terrific parental interest and buy-in, and I even went over there myself and met with a number of prospective students to talk to them about what they expected from the program and why they were joining. And, you know, their answers were profound. You know, they're students who are truly looking for a different type of opportunity, and were attracted to the global nature of the program, so we're looking forward to that. A few other items, the weather has been an absolute thorn in our side, you know, so we've had some, you know, some, a number of cancellations of events and functions, especially after-school activities, so our winter sports schedule is a little bit disjointed at this point in time. We have only used one snow day to this point, so we do still have our President's Day weekend, which I'm sure everybody is terribly upset about. But, you know, so we do have a long weekend this weekend, and I do believe they're calling for some snow, so that'll be interesting. Yeah. A couple other items, you know, the school performance reports were released last week. And the school performance reports, if you remember, they are, a couple years now, the state has utilized the performance reports as a means of sort of depicting the achievement in various categories of each and every individual school in the state of New Jersey. And in particular, ranking each school with 30 peer schools. So, schools get ranked with 30 peer schools, and they're ranked in categories that add up to, you know, that entail academic achievement, college and post-secondary, and graduation, college and career readiness, and graduation and post-secondary. And schools end up being, given these percentile ranks, and, you know, I've been trying to make some real sense of those reports for a couple years, and I've struggled, you know. And I pointed out last year that Freehold Township High School was ranked somewhere around the 50th percentile in academic achievement in their peer group. And when you looked at it, in the English Language Arts section, they were 99% proficient. So, the, and there was one percentage, one percentage score change on the HESPA moved them from the 100th percentile to the 50th percentile. And I think that, I am no statistical expert, I don't pretend to be, but when you get into those ranked statistics, and a very small change in performance has a disproportionate impact on the ranking of a school, and then you put it out there like that, that's plain dangerous. I think that sends poor messages to our communities, doesn't accurately reflect what is happening in the schools. So, for instance, the school that was ranked, and I won't name the school, but there was a school that was ranked in the 3rd percentile in that category, and they were 94% proficient. So, from 94 to 99% proficient, you know, you saw that drop. And I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that information is useful, period. Some of the other items that are in the performance reports are helpful, you know, they are using a number of different metrics, you know. We had requested to include the ACT for college and career readiness, and the state was responsive in including those assessments, because if you, in the first year these things were included, only the PSAT was included. So, schools like ourselves that use the ACT much more significantly than some other places, you know, we took a hit in our college and career readiness because they were not factored in. That has been changed. There is some interesting data there, but, you know, at the heart of this, the formulas, the 30 peer schools are based around the percentage of special education students, ELL students, and economically disadvantaged students within your district, and there's some sort of matrix that binds these 30 peer schools together. But we don't know what that matrix is. And so, absent possession of a matrix that tells me how to understand these rankings, I feel very uncomfortable as a superintendent of schools, being asked to make, you know, some indecisions off of that, or it's unfortunate that we have to explain some of that to our community, who may not even be aware of what that, what the backstory is. But, you know, the state continues to produce those as the ways in which we're, as an informational piece, is what I'll leave it. But candidly, I would respectfully request that we see that formula so we understand how these rankings are developed. I would respectfully request that we got off of peer groupings of 30 schools that change each and every year and make it very, very hard to draw comparative analysis over time. And I would respectfully request that we got off of the ranking use of statistics in a way in which there's somebody at the top and there's somebody at the bottom, even if there's one percentage of proficiency separating 1 from 30. So, Dr. Hazel is going to walk the public through our annual report of academic progress, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hazel.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Good evening. As Mr. Sampson stated, tonight our presentation is in two parts. I'm going to present the report of academic progress, which is an annual requirement to the board then, the areas of focus, and a public report of state sector results, as well as graduation rates, and a class of 2014. I'm going to really stick to the raw data. Mr. Sampson really made his interpretation of state performance reports, but this is a compilation of the data from those reports. Dr. Moore and the CNI team will follow me to the presentation on PARK, and they will further explore the new state assessments, as well as the instructional, curricular, and assessment processes that have been and will continue to be present in our district. So, the two data components that we're going to look at is the HESA results and graduation rate information. The high school graduation state assessment results encompass a high school proficiency assessment, as well as the alternate proficiency assessment. HESPA was the state test of record for the class of 2014, and it is also remains as a state assessment for the class of 2015. We'll take a look at the results in a moment. High school graduation rates are tracked and recorded on a yearly basis as a four-year graduation cohort rate. For our district, all of our schools exceed the 70%, 78% of graduation state target rate. This rate calculates the percentage of students who are awarded a high school diploma within four years of becoming a first-time 9th grader. The adoption of the common standard for the adjusted graduation cohort rating ensures that student transfer movement from one school or one district over time is accurately and consistently accounted for. So, it's no surprise to anyone, the state is presently transitioning from the current statewide assessment, as we know it, HESPA High School Proficiency Assessment, to PARK, Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. New Jersey is a governing state for PARK. We're part of a consortium of states who work together to develop a common assessment system aligned to the Common Core standards. PARK assessments are computer-based assessments, and they'll become operational this school year for grades 9, 10, and 11. There's a performance-based component that will start in March, March 2nd in some schools to be exact, and an end-of-year assessment that will take place in late February, in May. As you know, New Jersey adopted the Common Core standards in 2010. Since that time, our district has been committed to raising expectations, aligning curriculum, and prioritizing the best schools and resources for learning in the classroom. These assessments, like our own district assessments, TCAs, and teacher-made assessments, play a critical role in providing the information that our teachers need to tailor curriculum, deliver the instructional program, and close achievement gaps. Teachers need to know where their students are on the individual learning paths, and how they are growing our students toward meeting their individual goals. Additionally, our district and school leaders will leverage the information and data to inform curricular and instructional improvements. For example, how to differentiate and customize our instructional program so that every student is moving forward and moving on their own learning continuum, and planning for teacher professional development. The eligibility for a high school diploma for the class of 2014 and 15 is determined by the HESPA assessment, as well as fulfillment of New Jersey and Freehold Regional High School District graduation requirements. During the transition phase from HESPA to PARK, the State DLE, the Department of Ed has provided additional substitute assessments that may be used by high schools to determine graduation eligibility, and that's for the classes of 2016, 17, and 18. So, for the purpose of this report this evening, the assessment results pertain solely to the class of 2014. The HESPA and APA assessments are utilized to determine student achievement in mathematics and language arts literacy, and is just one component of the graduation requirement as specified in New Jersey Code. First-time 11th grade students took the assessment in March of their junior year. Students who didn't achieve the benchmark of 200 have opportunities to retest in October and March of their senior year. What is subgroup achievement? The ESAA, Elementary and Secondary Education Act, they're a flexibility waiver that requires, under federal funding guidelines, that each school district report on performance of disaggregated subgroups, as well as school-wide performance, and also the graduation rates. The subgroups are identified here, white, black, Hispanic, American Indian, Asian, two or more races, students with disabilities, limited English proficiency, and economically disadvantaged students. These are outlined on the slide. If a subgroup has fewer than 30 students, the group is suppressed, and the proficiency score for that group is not reported or identified. This slide here is a snapshot of the district performance for the class of 2014. This information is available also on the school district state performance reports. They're categorized by net goal, net progress target, or progress target, not net. It's in the areas of English Language Arts Literacy and Mathematics, and is for each identified subgroup. As a whole as a district, we have done extremely well in the areas of mathematics and language arts. The DLE has established that schools and subgroups meet expectations by either reaching the state performance target goal of 90%, or an individually determined performance target. The progress performance targets provide an analysis of student achievement, and more importantly, they're trying to really assess group. The progress targets are set in annual increments, so that within six years on a continuum, the percentage of non-proficient students is reduced by half, based on baseline data from 2011. This puts us in year three on the continuum. Again, we will see how the group structure interfaces once we're encountered with a new assessment of PARK. This slide is showing individual student performance results, again, in language arts and math, by subgroup, compiled from the state school performance reports. As a district, we continue to show exemplary results in these areas, and we far surpass the statewide performance goal of 90% and the individually determined progress targets. So, just going right across on the school line and the groups, you see how well we're surpassing and surpassing the 90%. In the areas and subgroups where we did not meet the goal or achieve the progress target, we have established concrete action plans to address the students' need with a concerted effort by our school leaders to monitor the performance of individual students and tell the students within the subgroups areas identified. We are proud to report, after review of the proficiency trends, all of our high schools demonstrated an increase in the percentage of students scoring advanced proficiency in language arts from 2012-13 to 13-14. You know, I'll turn the page to Dr. Moore, and Ms. Meckman, and Dr. Centura. They're really going to take a much closer look at PARK and our district ownership of the mandates that are before us. I do want to bring to your attention that our district has developed a PARK parent resource. This is a guide which is available for parents on our district website. Also, on the evening of February 25th, which is parent-teacher conferences, the hour prior to the conferences, the school administrators will be presenting a workshop, a one-hour workshop, for the parents, tailored to introduce the parents to the PARK test administration. We're really excited for those and hope that the parents do attend those informational sessions.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
What night, what was that night, February 25th?
It's parent-teacher conferences, so the hour prior will be the PARK presentation at each of our high schools.
Thank you.
Before you turn that over, Dr. Hazel, just before Dr. Moore begins the presentation, so just a few, a few items about, you know, PARK testing. Obviously, over the past year or so, there's been a tremendous amount of angst and worry and so on, you know, some, from, not just across the state, but just across a number of states about, you know, what does this mean for standardized testing, and what does this mean for my child, and particularly at the, at the local level. And, you know, at Freehold Regional High School District, you know, we have taken the approach from the very beginning that, you know, the Common Core is not new. And I'm not sure, I think sometimes folks are confusing the testing with the Common Core and using them interchangeably as if they're the same entity, and we know that not to be true, but, but since 2010, we have done a great deal of work around our curriculum in order to make sure that the requirements and the expectations established within the Common Core are something that we meet as a school district. As we transition to PARK, our approach has been, the assessments have not yet been underway. We don't, we don't have any, anything to really judge yet, you know, what information will or will not come from those assessments. It's all yet to be determined. We have hope that, you know, there's been a lot of promises made about what some of the usefulness of this, this data will be, and how that will work for students. We're cognizant in the district that, you know, there will, there will certainly be students and community members that, you know, may choose not to have their children take the PARK assessment, you know, we have provisions in place for that, certainly. But we are, I can speak as a parent of a child who will take a PARK assessment, you know, and that the, the first time around, we're going to see what it's all about, and we're going to take a look at that, and, and if it delivers on what's promised, we'll go from there. You know, the, we're in a tough spot here as school leaders, because we are required to, you know, certainly carry out the impetus of the state. And, but there's a balance there, and when we're given mandates, and those mandates are left to be interpreted at each local level about how they wash out within your school district, that, that is highly problematic. And we've asked for clarity around a number of issues and have not received that. But we are also clearly focused on embracing the opportunity and seeing what comes from this. And we're going to look at each and every one of our high schools and take a real deep dive on what the impact to instructional time is, what the feedback is, what the experience looks like for each student, what were the pros, what were the cons, and then we'll make some informed advocacy about how to, how to inform this process moving forward, you know, from a, from a, not just a school district perspective, but from a perspective from other, other like-minded districts across the state. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Can I ask, is this not working? I actually had two questions. I don't know if I'm going to steal Jeff's thunder, I don't think so. But, and this, I'm asking these questions because I've heard a lot of talk about it. The first one, Mr. Sampson, is, because I heard about conflicts at other boards with people speaking for the public. So, if the child's not taking PARK because the parent doesn't want their kid to take the park, what's the procedure for that? The child comes to school with a note and then just says, "I'm not taking it," or what is going to be going on there? When they, the parent comes to the decision, "No park."
Right, so, here we are asking, we're putting forth a regulation, and we're going to go over this at the, at the parent night, certainly address it. But if a, if a parent doesn't want their child to take an assessment, we certainly encourage folks to take the assessments. But parents have that right to refuse, refuse that. And if that is the case, we're asking for written notification a few, five days in advance so that we can plan appropriately, because the, you know, where things have gone off the rails a little bit across the state is that, you know, there's, there's been some school districts that say, "We're going to plan alternative activities," others that say, "Well, we're going to do sit and stare," which means you're going to stay in that testing room and read a book, which is the most unimaginable idiotic thing I've ever heard. And then there's other districts that are saying, "You know what, we're going to remove the, the child from the testing environment, and they'll be allowed to read quietly," and that's the tact that we're going to take. We wouldn't, we would not be equipped, from a, a human capital standpoint, to provide alternative experiences for students. So, we do have those provisions in place. I think it's sad that districts have been left to their own processes to address this matter. I think it's, I think there's a void of leadership, and we've been forced, and in some cases, I think, scapegoated to be the folks to deliver the news, that, you know, you can do this, but you can't do that. You know, we have, we're, you know, we are dealing with the irony of adopting a policy tonight where state code says, "Students must take the state assessment," but also adopting a regulation with opt-out provisions. That's madness. So, left without clear guidance, we will take the approach that we would, we would hope that our students would take the assessment because, and I'm sorry, Dr. Moore, if we're stepping all over your presentation, but, you know, that is, for the classes of 16, 17, and 18, there are a number of assessments that will, will serve as potential graduation requi, you know, they'll, they'll meet the prescribed graduation requirement. Now, there's a lot of those assessments. Outside of PARK, every single one of them is, has a monetary fee attached to it. So, there's an equity issue there. And, and the concern is, well, you know, wealthy suburban And, and, and the concern is, "Well, you know, wealthy, wealthy suburban young man, enjoy your SAT, get over your 400, and you've met your graduation requirement. You poor folks, good luck, you know, enjoy it." So I, you know, I, I think that, that that needs to be rectified at the state level, and that's a dangerous equity issue that is really troubling to me. So there, there, I think there's a lot yet to be figured out. I think we've moved forward very quickly with this. As, as I've said from the start, I think our school district is poised, I think our kids should be confident. I think our kids will do well. I think our kids will find those assessments to, to match much of the instruction and the assessments that they presently take. So I don't think there'll be any issues here, but I do believe that we have to be cognizant that students are going to need to meet graduation requirements, and, and PAR is one of those ways through which they can do that. The ultimate process would all probably, most likely ultimately result in one or more of these assessments being required for graduation as the HESPA was. So what that timeline is and what that looks like, we don't, we don't, we don't know yet. On that note, Dr. Moore.
Thank you. And then you didn't step all the way up. We still have not to say. And I want to thank the boards for this opportunity. This is really part two of a presentation that we began last day. We presented on this very theme of alignment and ownership. There were four other letters up there, C, T, S, S, that we talked about the Common Core students. And this is sort of the natural next step to talk about PAR, how our strategic values and how to see these assessments, and really the, the, our own mandate to use these data in the assessment for purposes that we already prepared before last night. I have Ms. Stephanie McMenon and Dr. Paul Santora from the CNI office to talk a little bit tonight, too, about some of the samples from the test and how different people used to, to address specifically what our students asked to do. Now, last day, when we presented on the Common Core, we really looked at a couple of key things. For example, we noted, this is front last night, we noted that efforts at national standards and national testing were new. Each of these three gentlemen attempted to bring all of those to us through various initiatives, and like our governor just last night, campaigning began to talk about PAR in the state, each of these three gentlemen, you know, did the same on their campaign trails and also blamed the prior president for, for, for testing. Each of these gentlemen tried to do the same. So we have, you know, historical national efforts, of course, to accomplish things. They are, as we stated last year. We described how that played out in New Jersey and the various standards that teachers in New Jersey have had to align to over the years, multiple and often very, very different bodies of standards over the years. We then described the most recent effort of the Common Core, describing, you know, the goals of college and career readiness, and how the standards are built as a staircase to these goals. Now, the notion of these standards being built around goals is going to be very important to our message tonight, so that's something that we will come back to as well. This notion of staircase leading to college and career readiness goals, every step therefore being important. We talked about shifts in both English and mathematics in terms of instruction and gave examples of how we saw teaching and learning and curriculum development changing in response to the mandate of the standards, but we ended on the note of our strategic plan, which as we fashioned it in 2011 and 12, we, we take these mandates into that plan, ensuring that our visions, our missions, and our values, we do as any districts abandon their strategic plans. There are newly minted, in many cases, strategic plans in the base of these mandates, but we, we have embedded them within, so that means advance of trust, all of those meetings through our values and our visions. And it's worth, before we talk a bit more about specifics of PAR, and particularly the first year of PAR this year, to kind of look very quickly at the three objectives of our strategic plan, and to maybe more importantly, what those three objectives add up to, which is this notion that all of our students will find and develop their passions and rigorous courses and programs while they're with us, all of our students along the path. And this is the promise, more than anything else, that we find ourselves reaffirming. Now, in the third year of our strategic plan, facing these mandates now, really finding we find ourselves reaffirming this, this is the lens, more than anything else, that we view our Common Core, like in our PAR efforts through. Now, this, this plan and this promise brought, you know, certain understanding within our own practice and our own organization as a district. We saw through our plan the need to expand our efforts to build a technology-rich teaching environment. Our BYOD network came online this year as the direction resulted in those conversations. We saw the need to put more and more data in our teachers' hands through achievement tracking of the systems, and to really leverage the use of those data to identify physical strengths and weaknesses of our students as we look at them, and each one of them, so the goal of college and career readiness in some area aligns to their passions. So we, we have our school improvement panels now working very hard with teachers on a goal to engage all staff members in data-driven collaborative discussions this year. There was a large group today engaged in training on how we teach teachers in that work. We also, of course, then see that we need to be led by, not just honor, not just notice, but actually be led by student passions, student choices, student interests. So our analyses now of all of those data have spurred us to really increase our efforts to close gaps, particularly in the ninth grade, and expand access to more compelling choices, particularly after junior and senior year. Also, some of the curriculum that we'll see coming this summer from us will be addressed in that, both increased supports in ninth grade and more compelling rigorous choices for students to follow their passions to in eleventh and twelfth grade. And in all of this, you know, we're prioritizing the teaching of students over the teaching of content. That becomes sort of a mantra for us, the teaching of the difficult students over the teaching of content. Now, into this, you know, drops, not by surprise, this was coming, but into this drops PAR, and of course, we field tested this last year. We don't have those data, we won't get data on the field test. That was diagnostic data for the organization of PAR and not, not for us necessarily to state. But, you know, now, from that field test, we have a majority of our English and mathematics students engaging in these tests this year. So all of our English students will have to listen, and most of our math students in algebra one, geometry, and algebra two will engage in March and April May testing, two phases of testing. And given the strategic objectives that we just talked about, we approach these tests as we approach everything else. We have a goal for all of our students. All of them will participate in rigorous programs aligned to their passions. All will be college and career ready in areas, on graduation areas in which they're passionate. PAR, like everything else that we do, happens along the way to that goal. So PAR is not an end for us. PAR is not the goal for us. Our goal is a life form to answer any of our students' questions. And this, you know, is written right into the construction of PAR itself. I forgive me, I actually feel a little technical here with what's known as a, a, this is web definite knowledge, this is the definite knowledge of the field, and anyone who's taught it in the past 20 years will recognize this as similar to things like Bloom's text on and other, other schemes that teachers have used over the years to classify how sophisticated the task is that they're putting in terms of students. This is the, the scheme that the bankers of the Common Core actually use, so it's one that we use now as well, with web steps of knowledge. So you can see at the top, Level One, the lowest level of sophistication, and you can see verbs, usages, recog, and lists, you know, low-level, low codices, and bad sorts of things. And as you roll around the wheel clockwise, things get much more sophisticated, so that you get all the way around throughout nine o'clock, and our students are just even analyzing as opposed to just identifying. So our goals, our curriculums, Common Core themselves are all keyed to this, to this field. RAN studies and other studies over the past several years have studied state assessments and determined that HESPA and all those other prior state assessments were up there, very low level. DOK, one definite college one, reset. And so the majority of questions were at the very lowest level. Now, you might be surprised to know that English, PAR, majority of questions are in two and three, and that's a felt that's almost early, too, to get the highest levels of sophistication. The levels at which we would say students who are passionate are truly contributing and creating in that area in which they're passionate, the goal that we have for all students to be ready to, to pursue their, their passions and rigorous programs and courses, that's Level Four. Our goals with our students in areas in which they're passionate are there. PAR is along the way. PAR, even in its construction and conceptualization, is not hitting that level all down. Majority of questions in PAR are in lower levels. So our own ambitions and aspirations for our students sit at a higher point. PAR is along the way, and we commit not to just sort of allowing students to, to be prepared for PAR, but also to create and contribute originally in those areas which are passionate, passionate college and career ready. The shifts that we mentioned earlier that Common Core in a goal like that has led us to, you know, these are the common shifts that we talked about in the Common Core within language arts and mathematics. And I'd ask Ms. McMenon and Dr. Santora to talk a little bit about how those shifts and other sorts of changes play out as we move from those lower level state assessments to something that's a little bit more rigorous in the nature of PAR. So I'll turn it over to her. Ms. McMenon?
I'm going to look down memory lane and do a better comparison, so that you can see what the state test used to ask our students to do versus the type of questions that are to be asked to perform on now with PAR. So first passage, and in choosing passages from HESPA, I did not cherry pick off the questions. I went to my old, my own former resources, the one I used to compare students with for the HESPA, were things that I actually gave them, so I'm not showing you the words to the word, for a second. Pretty quality of questions. The HESPA, in terms of language arts literacy, will test students mainly on a fiction passage, a non-fiction passage, reading and writing, both of those, and then two essays. So we'll start with fiction, because one of the claims is that Common Core PAR is getting rid of fiction, and that's not the case. The HESPA would give students either a short story or a part of a short story. In this case, this is from the list by Edna Sapon, a classic piece of literature. We'll see the two multiple choice questions, pretty typical, but really just forcing students to go back into the passage and be practically placed to a sentence or two where you would find the answers, and definitely that definite knowledge in one, simple recall out of this text, versus what we're seeing now in class samples. Is one of the big changes is multiple texts. One of the shifts is complexity of text. So we're looking away from the read one piece and answer question they commit. This sample question gives students two poems. One is the poem "Daedalus of Icarus" by Ovid. So we're dealing with the poet of Xerxes, dealing with the myth of the daedalus trying to escape from Labyrinth and flying too close to the sun and spiraling down into the sea. Pairing that with a modern poem by Anne Sexton, to a friend whose work has come to triumph, which also talks about the daedalus and Icarus myth in a very different way. Sexton praises Icarus for what he does, where Ovid is saying, "You foolish child, why didn't you listen to your father?" So you have two poems, but that using the same imagery, using the same characters, but they're not saying the same thing. So already we have this, this complex text challenging the students. So they read these two passages, and these are a pretty difficult type of multiple choice questions in the long city. The first question, and you would see HESPA questions like this, what is the main idea? What's the theme? So that's nothing new. What's new are these multiple, answer multiple choice questions, where the students now have to support their previous answers. So which is set as, let's say, the theme to check in the theater. Now, give me three pieces of evidence from the split text, or some choice one up there. And there are these evidences that are in the beginning, from A to Z in the first question. So we can't teach a child the trick to answering a question. You have to be able to understand what the evidence is part of the poem, which is basically the theme. So this is one of the big changes that we're seeing, obviously a higher standard of knowledge question, where students really need strategic thinking to point out important pieces of evidences to support the claim. We also write on the HESPA about fiction, they would give two short answer, open-ended questions, just like this, and this refers back to the Network of the Sword. And again, you see it very formally, like it was always a question with two bullet points, and I can tell you the formula that I used to give kids to answer that question, C W E T E S, and what each point was that they had to do to tackle that, to answer that question was done right, constantly went back into the text. Versus what we're seeing now with part samples, students have to write about more than one text, in this case, they're writing about the whole text. So we're asking how Sexton provides, rather than how Sexton perhaps forms the myth of daedalus and Icarus. And she says one completely different than what Ovid was saying, or the original one says. So why is she making this change? What's going on here? And look at what we've said in the paragraph today. What is emphasized, but that's also absence. That's something new. What isn't there? What is she ignoring? What detail is she leaving out? Maybe was Ovid not addressed in his original piece? So we're asking students to really think much more deeper, more carefully about these texts, very specific things. And notice again, we're going back to evidence, program of text. Everything to do in English, that in math, based on that evidence and reasoning. There will also be standalone essays on HESPA, where they were authentic in the sense that they would give a situation to a student that made sense to them. Usually, school bases use about dress codes, about, about punitive service in high school, what types of punishments would be appropriate in high schools. It was authentic in that someone's student could relate to, that they could speak about. But no. But notice, all they're giving is saying that here's the situation. I used to tell my students as an English teacher, "Make up the evidence, make up statistics, make up facts, pretend to cite the New York Times from some study at some university." These words are always curtly stated, but what does the student have? So we have, or this persuasive essay with what evidence, what proof are we giving students? Versus what we're doing now, there is no standalone essay like that on the PAR. Everything is text-based. This is a sample that is based off of pretexts, letters written at work between John and Abigail Adams, and they're lengthy conversations and often debates about very different political viewpoints. And it's asking the students, all right, about the ideas of freedom, and that these, this marriage couple, that these very different contrast views, right? And it explains the contrast reviews, so tell me what the texts are saying, how they are disagreeing with one another. In here, I say, "Make a claim." Now the student has to make the original idea, and the whole idea is, I read these three things, "What's my claim about the idea of freedom and independence?" And then how John Abigail Adams add to your understanding of freedom. We have a lot more interaction where students can pull evidence, select strong evidence, select thorough evidence, and synthesize information versus just pull some facts up out of the survey.
I have a question. So they have to write an essay, I'm just curious, how long is this essay? One piece of paper, two sheets?
It is a pure essay, so they are, they are typing. Time on the text box is on the middle.
It is sixty minutes.
This one?
This particular sample.
The whole test or just that individual?
No, that particular.
For that, they give you sixty minutes?
Yeah. Question, yeah. Question, where do you get this?
So in this, so Woody, do you go, you go to English class and do this, or you have sixty minutes, but in one day, how long is the test?
Yes, so the individual school testing schedules are, are coming up on the website. We also, and we'll talk later in the presentation, there, there are, you know, parent meetings for...
We also, and we'll talk later in the presentation, there are parent meetings for a lot of sharing details like that. But the, you know, the scheduling of the test is one of the considerations that we'll talk about later in the presentation. But it is, you know, the scheduling of that is, you know, it's not that the English tests, the English classes taking the test necessarily, but those students have to go to the test session, you know, to the test session.
So the John and Abigail Adams essay, you'd have sixty minutes to write it? Is that what you're saying? And just to give a rough idea, with English, HARC, how many different, like, basically how many hours are you being tested?
We'll have all of that later. If we could, we'll take some of these questions for the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't want to forget my question.
It is a very valid question. And the math, you'll see, you know, in the session, we'll show you the amount of time taken in HARC testing, which the students have to actually guess is only very little longer than what they spent on HESPA. The HESPA was the shortest test, and I always was appropriate, I remember fondly, almost two hours, the shortest testing session. And it was three days, usually when it's on two twenty, two thirty, and a two hour session, three days to go. So we're not doing, but again, that one. But the passages they were reading also to, because I understand your concern, how can a child do all this in a short amount of time? The passages while leading are not overly lengthy as well. So it's not like they're reading a three page letter, three three page letters between John and Abigail. They are section, they are excerpts, is that they just released many new sample HARC DLA questions this morning. And I really wish I had this, they know, we're putting this together, so I can show you some more of the questions that they had. The key emphasis is on those instructional shifts that we talked about, complex tests, evidence-based rates, common knowledge-based leads. And not just what the text says, but synthesize.
That seems a lot to me.
And then Dr. Santora, there are some of the same kind of stuff that we got some of the.
So the math section of the HARC is, we're using involves algebra one geometry and those involve an algebraic. If they're not getting an algebraic test, you have to apply them, and they don't prepare the algebraic assessment. The sample one algebraic, it really stress the change from the HESPA to the HARC in practice standards. In the HESPA, it was all about content. Can you match to the content? In the HARC, it's all about the practices, not you need to know the content, but what can you do with that content? Can you read this? Can you apply it? Can you model it? So the first example is an example from the HESPA. They give students data from data probability, this is the probability section. They get a student's data. They then tell them, on a grid, construct a scatter plot. Then it says, identify the relationship of the data and then identify the outlier. All three of those are really low level skills, which can they go to the vocabulary and then can they construct a simple plot? When we move on to the HARC, it changes drastically. In this question, if you notice, there's no numbers at all. What it says is, here's a study that students are ready to conduct it. Analyze the method they use and identify what method they used. Then see if you can discover a better method than what they used and be able to justify why your method is better. So it's not just about knowing the content, it's about determining what's the best method I can apply to the content, mathematical reasoning. And that's what the idea of this real stress, it's really making tests more, I don't want to say difficult, more rigorous for students. They have to really pay more than just beyond the concept and skill. In the next example, this was great. This is a typical HESPA-like question. It's a word problem, but the real life scenario is really not there. It's basically like you and your neighbor are both filling up your pools, each hose has water at a different rate. What will the pool change to color? It's not something we really do in the real world. You never say your neighbor type, but they do, they fill up their pool. That's not what we normally do. And if you look at the problem, it says, write the equation, write the equation, find whether it's staying well. Again, it's telling the students step by step exactly what they need to do. Low level skills, can you do the math? When we move on from the HARC example, it's very different. Now, the school does that in the world of worlds. They give you an equation, well, they don't actually give you the equation, they give you the fact that you write equations saying how much you currently spend on your water bill. Then they tell you that the water companies come up with a new plan that's supposed to save you money. You're supposed to calculate when that saving starts to take place. This is something that we actually do in the real world. Not only that, it doesn't say to them, write the equation. It doesn't say they have to write the equation. It says, mod. It's not telling the students how it gets the information, it's telling them to figure out how it gets the information. And they don't care if you write it or if you write the equation as long as you get to the correct answer. It also says, just what are your answers in terms of the context? Do not just, what's the math answer? What does that mean to the problem? Would you go with the new plan? Are you going to save money? When does that saving start to take place? So the HARC really exercising these skills that we truly want students to have and be able to do. It's not just about, can you do the math? It's how can you apply that math in your life? Third example. Okay, third example, really, we do this all the time. Can you count the volume of the state of butter? Give it the measures. The next part of the problem is, if the butter is reduced to half, now can you find the volume? And can you write a ratio comparing them? Again, not something we can often, very low level on skills, all the information's there to you. The next example isn't something that our students might all do, but it's an application problem. In the next example, you're a farmer, you have to build a silo. A dump truck is a certain size, and they give you the height of the dump truck, it's a two dump loads of fertilizer. You have to create a silo that adheres to county laws that'll be able to hold the two dump trucks load of fertilizer. It then says to you, show that your design is able to store this fertilizer. You're designing a model, and you're proving that your model's the best model. Although we're not all built in silos for fertilizer, we've all been in situations where you have to see if something's going to fit in containers and make sure that works. So again, the HARC's really focusing on those skills that we need. Students are applying, they're learning. It's not telling them what to do, they have to truly think. And that's the big difference between where we were before and where we are now. Question mark.
That's really the major difference between the kind of depth and level of levels too. And, you know, like as Dr. Santora and Ms. McMenon, these are skills we want students to have. A goals oriented curriculum positions, you know, this is where we want students to be mapping backwards, what are the steps we have to go to? And that's, that's kind of the nature of this, is you look at those steps, those steps are you. The notion here that, again, HARC is a stop along the way, when we talk about students following their passions in rigorous courses and program, and we talk about our students every day doing even more sophisticated and complex, they do, they already do, hands down, particularly in those rigorous courses and programs, which they attribute an exalt of knowledge and testing. When we view HARC and the data that we might receive on a student, you know, against this notion of a goals oriented curriculum, here's where we want them all to be, here are the steps along the way, we, you know, we, the data that comes through HARC become kind of important tools in that toolbox of understanding where is students trying to be aligned, where we need to, need to get in there and help them get over, we need to, they haven't really capitalized in experience that they have. So the use of that data in our classroom shifts from just assessing the students against a single bar, where all students will sort of master this particular content, to a bar that, you know, has to be more responsive to what our students' passions are, what their interests are, what their aspirations are, what they want to do, what they believe us, and really closing the gaps then that we identify to help students get there. We really look forward to conversations in which we add some of these data. Parents will also receive these data. We look forward to those conversations in which we unpack what those gaps might look like and where we might be able to help students close those gaps. The concerns though, we have several important concerns, despite being eager to get these data, despite being eager to see what comes back on these tests, while HARC may give us another value, we know maybe our students tend to consider, we love to gain limitations as we go down the street, there are things that we definitely have struggled as a state and as a nation that we've been testing. The testing time is lost instructional time. I think that's one of the things that we all realize and there's no way around. The HESPA testing time that we're used to for our duties. HARC, when we look at the March performance basis, the end of the year, Rachel May, you see three hundred ninety. So the time is not all that off. And that's, that's not time on task. One of the conversations, you know, over there with Mr. Robert, and the essay portion is a sixty minute test through the measurements of the field test. They determined that students really were working for forty to forty-five minutes generating it. So the time on task is actually less than the actual testing time. The testing time as a whole is lost instructional time. You see it not that far off, but the thing we have to realize is that students, many more students are going to, Scotts is their field, many more students are engaged, and they're engaged three years in a row, three, four years. So the lost instructional time is at three ninety points for time. And when you look at the facilities, we've made this commitment in the district in this first year to minimize risks by putting students in front of these tests on wired desktops and not utilizing a wireless network, which really concerns them about making sure they have the most robust experience of a computer to take these tests. There are then computer resources that are available to other students while these tests are happening. We also are concerned about the speed in which these data are going to come back to us. HARC and the state have told us that we are not likely to get these data back until the next fall. They may be valuable when we get them. Some of the reports, the draft reports that they've been showing, have a lot of information about how the students' code is compared to other students and compared to bars and measurements in the Common Core on HARC. So we may, on this individual's fake students' report, get a lot of information about where that student is lying in and where that student is exceeding expectations. Teachers, they promise will be able to log in and get all of these data as well. We're alarmed, however, with HARC officials admit in front of large audiences that the system for generating these data is built out, and that these are, these are models of those reports that we have received. So we are concerned. We're using these data to impact individual students' strengths and weaknesses. We need those data. We are worried about some of the uses of these data. Here, I'm not so worried about testing companies selling our title data to, I'm not so worried about that. What I'm worried about is the comparisons that have led to all of this in which our country has been compared to other countries that do not have the mission that we have in this country of comprehensive education for all. All does mean all in this country and in our district, talking about empowering passions, all means all. Our Department of Education has tried to comfort us, make us certain that these data won't be used to track students earlier or to create efficient series of education. But we have also seen them ready to use these data in performance reports and other venues where, you know, we have questions about their analyses and validity for some of those conclusions. And finally, they have, well, this, it's actually a quote from the nineties, two thousand, multiple reporting efforts in New Jersey, NCLB and others, but this quote has recently come back to the board in descriptions of our states and other states approaching HARC. A lot of questions remain unanswered. So this vast revolution in how we operate may need some more vision yearning, may need some more study. In fact, the recent, recent reports out of the January report from that study commission on the use of student assessment signaled really that a lot more discussion would need to really take place in districts and in the state to fully realize the full value of these data. Yet the tests are here. And our current eighth graders will be beholden to pass these tests in order to graduate. So we worry about that. Things might be a little bit.
So they have the option, taking nine, ten, one, very?
Yeah, I can, I'll run through that. Yeah, that's, that's excellent. But, you know, bringing us back to our overall goal here, the lens through which we look at all of these tests, all of these mandates, is again, an achievement that we've made which we do everything, alignment, evaluation, HARC testing, all of that, everything that we do, our concerns are grounded in protecting this most important issue, this most important challenge of everything. So when we talk about all of these things along the way, we recognize that this is much longer than anything really, really asked to do for these other tests, and why we have confidence, I think, in our students in the coming years on these tests. We, do you want to invite everyone? February twenty fifth, each of our schools, in the hour before conference, will be running a HARC intervention session. Five, yes. They'll be addressing, you know, some of the nuts and bolts of schedules, the schedule of our centers, and also orienting parents and family members to some of the different support committees. So thank you, thank you very much for your patience through that and for allowing us to deliver to you part two of this duology of HESPA. As we assess the state's, how we intend to block these students.
Dr. Moore, just a comment and a question. First of all, thank you and the rest of your team for this excellent report. I want you to understand, I heard everything you said, and I know I'm going to sound like an old teacher, which I am, so I have to ask you this question. Is there a fear that teachers are going to end up doing what happened in New York where they taught to the region, and we're going to end up teaching to the HARC test and stifle creativity in the classroom?
Well, you know, I think different districts, differences, one of the unique aspects, you know, the way New York handles teacher evaluation data is very different from how other states handle it, that's HARC equation necessarily. But I think here, and also in New York, having tiers diplomas, you know, I think here, and particularly with our commitment to, you know, something beyond just alignment to this test, I think we have much less of a chance of running into something like that. When we talk about a goals oriented curriculum we look at, what they're shooting for and what these skills are that are being tested and that are being held up in the Common Core, I don't know that anybody says we don't want students to be able to do that. But I think it's up to us with our teachers and supervisors and principals and everyone else to determine what's the best way for us to move everyone through this. So it's, it's not something that I think we've been sensitive about. It's not something that we've been focusing on, and you must get your students ready for the HARC, and here, how do you prep for the HARC? I think it's more about what are the important skills in your discipline that students who are passionate in your discipline will need to master in order to continue on.
But here's another point to that as well, Jeff. So, you know, school districts that have not adequately prepared or have, you know, chosen a sort of not fully immersed themselves in, in, in doing the curriculum work that's needed to really build up your, your instructional program, they're going to struggle. When I hear, when I hear stories from teachers in other districts who say, we did park prep or we did that, that's terrible. And I do think you're going to see some of that. You're not going to see it here. I, I think that any standardized assessment takes care of itself with effective instruction, period. So if you're teaching any course and you're doing a great job of it, and, and your instructional strategies are appropriate, you're embedding those skills in what you do within the scope of the curriculum as you go. So when the students take any form of sort of summative, end of the year, end of course assessment, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be new to them, but that also doesn't mean that you taught to the test. You know, you, you develop the skills within those students so that they can perform well on that test. And that's the way to do it, you know? You know, you're, you're an old teacher, and I'm a not as old teacher. And the, you know, when you taught, when I taught my advanced placement courses, I didn't worry about the AP test. I worried about the skills that the students would need to perform well on that AP test at the end of the school year. And the test took care of itself. And, and I think that we have to take that approach. It's not, it's not an I gotcha, oh, you know, oh my goodness, my students are going to now need to do this, and I can't be creative. To me, you can be every bit as creative and still have students do well on a particular assessment, but that starts with the individual instructor, and that starts with us as, as educational leaders, and it starts with the work we're doing. leaders, and it starts with the work we're doing in the school district, and what are we doing to build the capacity of the teachers in this district to make sure we meet those expectations? And I think we're fooling ourselves if we think everybody comes to work in any school district every day and does everything right, but I also think that we have a responsibility to make sure that we're always trying to get at that right, and we're trying to build those bridges for those folks to continue to hone their instructional skills and to get on with what really matters, and that's the teaching and learning in the classroom. And all this other stuff is noise. It's just noise, and what happens in the classroom is what's important. And I think that that's been our focus here. You don't see any PARC prep, big, "Oh my goodness, PARC is coming, what are we going to do?" We're doing what we do, period, and the rest of it should take care of itself. In class earlier today, somebody asked me if I was worried about our PARC scores in comparison to other school districts after the first round. I said, "If I'm worried about that, you know, I shouldn't be sitting in this seat." And I think that that's the attitude we have in the school district. We'll learn from it, we'll identify areas, but then that's embedded in the teaching and learning in the district. That's not saying, "Do these 10 problems because you might see them on PARC." There's a very sharp distinction, and effective instruction will draw that distinction.
That's exactly how I feel after this presentation. I feel that they're developing skills. I felt in the past you were teaching to the test, and you were wasting so much, "Okay, let's get ready for that," whatever, and I don't see that at all in this presentation. I feel that they're going to develop skills, but whatever happens, I just feel that they're going to be more productive and more prepared if they go to the college level or just in the workforce, because they're definitely going to be creative and they're going to have to do serious thinking. They really are. It's not going to be a multiple choice type of thing anymore, and it's not going to be memorization. It's just going to be that your skills have to be developed through, not from, okay, younger grades, but ninth, 10th, 11th, I mean, I feel that our students will be prepared in college, because they've always said they're not prepared in the writing aspect when they get to college. Because a lot of them have to take the test freshman or before, or July or August, whatever it was, to see what level they are in their English, right? Am I right? Most of the college have done that because, and I think they will be more prepared just because of this presentation.
And it's, yeah, I think that's also the concern in actually discussing, you know, that staircase, when we stand for a doctor by the state in 2012, our current rising ninth graders who were going to be the first students who would pass this test were already halfway through their education before years, so they were halfway up the stairs. Who knows what steps they had missed, right? So our commitment to close gaps in ninth grade isn't part of our response to that and all of these other realities that we have as a school. But the, there will be some years in which we're working with students who haven't had the whole page through 12, 13. That's a concern too. Those as well, because they'll be able to pass this test and will not have that much hassle of instruction against those students.
Here's a question I have. I know the way things operate in this country, right? So basically, the rising ninth graders have to pass the test to graduate. So I have, like, to think the schools around here are among the upper echelon in the United States, so if we're basically saying how rigorous it is, somewhere down the road, I could see the test scores not being so good, and 150 million people in an uproar because their kid didn't do good. So hypothetically, let's say there's this ground swell, that there needs to be change. Who has the ultimate power to lower the standards or change the test so it's not rigorous? The people of this country, they're not going to, like, let's say in Chicago, 99% of the kids did horrible on this test. They're going to change the test. So who's actually responsible? Who are the human beings that have the final say as to how rigorous the test is and if it needs to be less rigorous so 200 million kids don't fail?
So there is not a single person. It's like DePuce who had that response, but the consortium, the states and the consortium determine those cut. We don't know what those cut scores are. We have a signal, and this is something to share certainly as we look at that list of alternative assessments that Mr. Sampson mentioned, and you know that, for goodness, to meet the requirement for graduation, I need to get a 400 on my SAT. What is a 400? And that's, that's a score that is quite, quite low in sort of the thinking of what is an SAT score. If that's a signal to us in terms of what will be required on PARC, then they are setting an interesting kind of low. The concern that we have from that on that last slide is, so you will pass at this level, but at what level are we going to call you college and career-ready, and what's going to happen? You know, so is there a potential for retiring, graduation requirement? That's something frankly has us a lot, we're very much concerned, because that can lead to all kinds of reactions and tracking. Again, you know, I go back to the same sort of, we want students to be able to do these things, and these are goals that we want students to be able to be ready and equipped to do when they leave, but the timing of it, the fact that students haven't had this case on treatment and they're taking this test, those are all serious concerns.
And so the perfect example, Michael, is eighth grade student enrolled in Algebra I. Cut scores are determined, and there's potentially what we understand, five different levels of what those scores may or may not look like, the top two of those levels, level five, level four. My first critique was, if you start identifying kids by levels, you're done before you even move any further, so I would strongly encourage you to get off of the levels. We're not red birds, blue birds, yellow birds anymore. That aside, college and career-ready is somewhere, level four, level five. A student takes Algebra I in eighth grade, they take, they earn a B in the coursework. They pass the assessments, you know, over the course of the year, the district made benchmarks, whatever they might be. At the end of the year, they take the PARC, they score three. They move on. But they're, my question was, so are you going to set schools up to move kids on that you are now saying aren't college and career-ready, but they've matriculated through the curriculum within the school? That's a dangerous place to be. And then that, the gaps that Dr. Moore is talking about, that, there's a real potential there. And that's why we're, we're waiting anxiously as well to see what all of this looks like, but I think we've, we'll be able to make some sense of it once we get out of that, that the first year of testing and understand what, what it all shakes out to be. And we're hopeful that they're listening to input, we'll see, but that's, that's a real problem, and then you're going to create a system of, you know, even, even further gaps. I mean, you know, you see some, you unfortunately see school districts make determinations against standardized scores. Poor practice, if that's, if that's your only criteria, get out of education. You know, so there's a real potential there.
The feedback that you get that refers to these breakpoints that you talked about, that's coming down to you from the State Department of Education?
No, we, we attended, our leadership team attended a presentation from the, the folks at PARC that went over what, what their scoring system might look like and how they were processing that. So we were there three or four weeks ago, and they presented some of the things that Dr. Moore alluded to and put up on the screen, but they also, they presented a, a, a potential framework for levels that might, might accompany these assessments. If that stays, you know, I don't know, we'll see, but that's, that's a potential. Everything is potential, you know, things haven't been definitively locked in stone, and so we're, you know, we're spending a lot of earnest time making sure that we're, we're very well positioned to manage this ably. Thanks, Dr. Moore. Thanks, Nicole, thanks, Stephanie.
We have board reports. First up is curriculum and instruction.
Well, I wasn't there. I don't know who the chairman is.
Is there any update? Curriculum and instruction?
Hey, Mr. Dr. Moore was the...
Okay, finance committee, Michael.
Forget it. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to go over a bunch of different issues that have been in the hopper for a while. If we look at the energy savings program, the specs for the HVAC infrastructure are out the bid for all six schools, and as you may recall, more than 60% of the capital program pertains to HVAC improvements, such as the high efficiency boilers and energy control systems. As we've also mentioned before, the scope of the work at Freehold Boroughs is more complex since the school is so old, and we should also be awarding some contracts at the March 9th meeting with respect to HVAC. And I talked about the oldest school, the Borough, since Colts Neck doesn't need boilers, the scope of work there, it's not very much. With respect to roofing, the roof at Marlborough was done last fall. As we've also discussed, Freehold Boroughs taken a bit longer. The roof on and around the gym should be done in the spring though. With respect to roofing at the other schools, the roof specs for Colts Neck, Freehold Township, Howell, Manalapan are currently out the bid, and 40% of that is going to be paid for by the New Jersey School Development Authority. So over the next few months, you're going to see various resolutions for your approval pertaining to hearings and execution of a bunch of SDA documents. With respect to the track at Manalapan, that was discussed tonight in executive session, and we're looking to get that project back on track, so to speak, and completed as soon as possible. With respect to pay-for-performance subsidies that really flow through the Board of Public Utilities, we continue to move through BPU subsidy approval process. Three schools have received approval for subsidies based on the post-construction actual savings, while the other three are in the final stages of review. They should be approved shortly. Finally, the water system at Colts Neck, the redesign and component replacement project is underway, and an award recommendation for that project should be ready for the meeting on March 9th, and that's it.
Thank you, Michael. Policy committee?
Policy had a virtual meeting due to the weather, and we have three policies up for board approval, first read tonight, one around transgender students, one around student assessment, and one around community partnerships. The transgender student policy reiterating the, the processes in which, to allow a transgender student to use facilities within a school system and a school building and what that looks like. The student assessment, we're, we're looking at some of the language there. There are some, some statements within the current policy on the first read that we are certainly going to edit and change for the second and final read, and I'll make those changes and recommendations clear to the policy committee. And the community partnerships policy is really an outgrowth of our strategic plan. We're moving forward and trying to better encapsulate a database around who our community partners are, what do those look like, and being able to accurately assess that and grow those, grow those partnerships. So in, in moving forward under that string of the strategic plan, we realized that our community partnerships policy was a bit out of date and needed to be overhauled. And so those were the three policies that the committee addressed.
Thank you. Also, Reverend Jeff wanted to thank you for the information you gave him about the transgender information. Next up is public participation, and we have no one signed up, moment of silence for the old days. For those of us who've been here for a long time, you can smile now.
I got a couple of agenda ideas.
Oh, Mr. Boyce.
Regarding the agenda, just to point out, there is an addendum that's on the back table. It's a yellow sheet of paper. A couple supplements to that. On G3, on the, the regular agenda, just a correction for approval of appointment for Kayla Whalen, change the dates to February 12th, 2015, to June 5th, 2015 instead of June 30th. Also, there's an additional transfer, which is for $2,500, and this is an attachment. It's from an account for child study team supplies into the corresponding capital account for purchase, that's a capital item of over $2,000. Also, we'll add this one on as G20, and I'll read it into the record. Whereas the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education seeks to provide all students with educational instructors capable of providing students with the best educational experience, consistent with New Jersey state law and board policy, whereas the board receives certain information regarding actions and/or statements made by employee number 6639, which creates concern for his or her ability to instruct students consistent with board policies, regulations, and known expectations. Whereas employee number 6639's alleged actions and statements are deemed by the superintendent to be a potential deviation from normal physical or mental health, is hereby resolved that the board upon recommendation of the superintendent and consistent with NJSA 18A 16-2 hereby requires employee number 6639 to undergo a complete mental, physical examination. And we'll add that on as G20. And Mr. Moses, I believe that is all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
We are approving a new CECA at Freehold High School this evening. Jason Longo, Jason, if you can stand up for a minute. Jason is coming to us from the Toms River School District. He has a lot of experience as a high school coach and a site supervisor at the middle school level. He works as an official as well. His personality and engagement really won over the various committees that he went through. You know, your first mistake, Jason, is that your wife with you? Yeah, well, you shouldn't have given me a card because I think she's going to want that back once you start working here and you see the hours. But we welcome Jason to Freehold High School, and we're happy to get him aboard, and hopefully we can get you here soon, so welcome, Jason. All the best.
On a personal note, I know that Linda and especially Jerry are very happy that Jason will be coming to the Borough. Jason, as an old teacher and coach at the Borough and the Freehold Borough representative, I want to welcome him into the high school, into the district. Okay, next up, we have the agenda, which goes from G1 to K2. That includes all the fantastic addendums already mentioned by Mr. Boyce. I'd like to take the agenda in one shot. Mr. Boyce, we go through this every time. We need a motion to move the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
There we go, and discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Panario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes, except on item K2, policy number 2622, student assessment, first read, I don't know.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, new business? Seeing no new business. Old business? There is no old business. Therefore, I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
So shall you say, so shall it be written. Thank you for coming.